Loving Heavenly Father, Almighty God, in the most highly exalted name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we enter Thy holy presence with worship and adoration and thanksgiving. Especially this morning, we are going to remember, commemorate the crucifixion and the death of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you Father for bringing me from Thirnali to Lopunib, Mershaba to be here with Thy people to minister them the word of God. This morning, I seek your help, grant us open heaven as I am going to share the word of God in relation to the Good Friday. Come mercy upon me, anoint me freshly and use me for your glory and for the edification of the church. So offer this prayer with thanksgiving in the precious name of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So today is the Good Friday.
So today is the Good Friday.
People of God call this day in different, different way.
And those who worship God call this day differently. Some people call it Good Friday. And some people call it Great Friday. And some people also call it a sorrowful Friday. And some people call it a sorrowful Friday.
So majority of the people call it Good Friday.
But many people call it Good Friday. What is the goodness of this Good Friday? And what are the good things of this Good Friday? How this name came to this Friday? Because the good shepherd of the sheep, he died on the cross thousands of years ago. In John's Gospel, Chapter 10, we find there how Jesus said, "I am the good shepherd of the sheep; the good shepherd lays down his life for sheep." And in John's Gospel, Chapter 10, we find there how Jesus said, "I am the good shepherd of the sheep; the good shepherd lays down his life for sheep." And in John's Gospel, Chapter 10, we find there how Jesus said, "I am the good shepherd of the sheep; the good shepherd lays down his life for sheep." So the good shepherd means he is the creator. And the good shepherd means he is the creator. In Psalms 100, we find there how he is God and at the same term, how he is the shepherd. And we see in Psalms 100 what kind of worship God has. And what kind of worship God has. Psalms 100, please. And three verses, please. Know that the Lord is God. What we are reading here. Know that the Lord is God. It is he who made us and we are his, we are his people and the sheep of his pasture. He created us and we are his. So he is the Lord and God. He is our shepherd. He is our creator. So our creator came down into this world as a good shepherd. What happened on this Good Friday? And what happened on this Good Friday? The Lord God, that the creator of the whole world, he came into the world as a good shepherd in the form of man. And see, the good shepherd, the Lord God, that the creator of the whole world, he came into the world as a good shepherd in the form of man. And see, the good shepherd, the Lord God, the good shepherd, the Lord God, he came into this world as a good shepherd in the form of man. So this is such a day where the good shepherd laid down his life for his sheep. See, this is such a day where the good shepherd laid down his life for his sheep. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Before he died on the cross, how he carried our sin to the cross. Please, first Peter, Chapter 2. See what we, what we find here, he himself bore our sins in his body on the tree. See, he has brought our sins in his body on the tree. See, he has brought our sins in his body on the tree. See, he has brought our sins in his body on the tree. See, he has brought our sins in his body on the tree. See, Jesus has borne all our sins on the tree. See, he has brought our sins on the tree. See, he has brought our sins on the tree. John's Gospel, Chapter 1 and verse 29, there we find, John the Baptist declares, "Behold the lamb of God which would take away the sins of the world." See, John's Gospel, Chapter 1 and verse 29, there we find, John the Baptist declares, "Behold the lamb of God which would take away the sins of the world." See, John's Gospel, Chapter 1 and verse 29, there we find, John the Baptist declares, "Behold the lamb of God which would take away the sins of the world." So Lord Jesus Christ as a lamb of God, he has taken away all our sins on the cross. The great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. So on this Good Friday, Lord Jesus Christ as a lamb of God, he borne all our sins on the cross. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. The great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. In the Old Testament, if anybody wants to make atonement for his sin, he used to bring a lamb. See, in the Old Testament, if anybody wants to make atonement for his sin, he used to bring a lamb. See, in the Old Testament, if anybody wants to make atonement for his sin, he used to bring a lamb. So after bringing the lamb, the possessor used to do one thing, he used to lay his hands on the lamb, which means the lamb is bearing all his sins on his behalf. He used to hold his hands on the lamb and prove that all our sins are on his behalf. So similarly, the Lord Jesus Christ as a lamb of God for your sake and my sake in your place and my place, he has taken our sins on the cross. Similarly, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. So my first point is, Jesus as a lamb of God, he has taken away all our sins on the cross. The first point is that the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. As Peter has declared in his epistle, he said, "He himself bore our sins in his body on the cross." See, the chapter says that he has brought our sins on the cross. See, the chapter says that he has brought our sins on the cross. Firstly, Jesus Christ as a lamb of God, he carried away all our sins. Firstly, Jesus Christ as a lamb of God, he carried away all our sins. The first thing, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. Secondly, not only he had carried our sins, the second point is, he died for our sins on the cross. The second point is, he died for our sins on the cross. Secondly, he died for our sins on the cross. Yes, secondly, he died on the cross for our sins. Secondly, he died for our sins on the cross. For whom he died on the cross. For whom he died on the cross. In Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 6, there we find, he died for ungodly people. See, in Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 6, he died for ungodly people. So Jesus died for ungodly. See, the great shepherd of the world died for ungodly. Secondly, he died for sinners according to Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 8. And according to Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 8, he died for sinners according to Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 8. And according to Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 8, he died for enemies. And according to Romans, Chapter 5 and verse 8, he died for enemies. So Jesus Christ as a lamb of God, he carried our sins and died on the cross for ungodly, for sinners and for enemies. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought his sins on the cross for sinners and for enemies. So the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross for sinners and for enemies. My dear brothers and sisters, Good Friday is the symbol of God's love. See, my dear brother and my dear sister, it is the love of God. My dear brothers and sisters, it is the love of God. The creator, God the creator of the whole universe, he loved the world so much and sent his only begotten son, the Lord Jesus Christ, so that he may die for your sake and my sake. See, the great shepherd, who is the creator of the world, has sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be an atonement for our sins. Firstly, we have loved God, but God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be an atonement for our sins. Firstly, we have loved God, but God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be an atonement for our sins. Firstly, we have loved God, but the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. Firstly, we have loved God, but the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. One John, Chapter 4 and verse 10, there we find how God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be our prophesiation, to be an atonement for our sins. See, John's Gospel, Chapter 4 and verse 10, there we find how God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be our prophesiation, to be an atonement for our sins. See, John's Gospel, Chapter 4 and verse 10, there we find how God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be our prophesiation, to be an atonement for our sins. See, John's Gospel, Chapter 4 and verse 10, there we find how God loved us and sent his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to be our prophesiation, to be an atonement for our sins. That is why the Good Friday signifies the love of God, true love of God, sacrificial love of God. And what does the Good Friday represent? The worship God and the love of God. And what does the Good Friday represent? The worship God and the love of God. Not only he carried our sins, secondly, he died for our sins, but thirdly, he has taken all the punishment of sin on his body. The great shepherd has not only brought our sins on the cross, but has also died on the cross. But he has also suffered the punishment of sin on his body. So the Lord Jesus Christ, he has taken all the punishment of sin upon his body. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. From John's Gospel, Chapter 8 and verse 2. Romans, Chapter 8 and verse 2. Third verse, please. For God has done what the law weakened by the flesh could not do by sending his own son in the likeness of sinful flesh and for sin he condemns sin in the flesh. Romans, Chapter 2 and verse 3, sorry, 8 and 3. Romans, Chapter 2 and verse 3, because whoever did wrong for his body could not do it. The great shepherd of the world did it. That is to say, he sent his own son to the body of his body and sent his body to the blood of his body. Yes, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. He has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. He has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. He has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. He has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. Here the word of God tells what the law could not do, God did that. See, here is what is written, the world that cannot do it, the great shepherd of the world has shown it. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. The law could not forgive him who committed sin. The world that did wrong for his body does not give him forgiveness. See, the world that did wrong for his body has brought our sins on the cross. The law tells he who committed sin, he must die. And the world says that whoever did wrong for his body has to die. See, the world says that whoever did wrong for his body has to die. But what the law could not do, God did that. But the world that cannot do it, the great shepherd of the world has done it. See, the world that did wrong for his body has brought our sins on the cross. By sending his son in the form of man and putting all the punishment of sin upon his son. The God sent his son to the body of his son to the body of his son so that whoever did wrong for his body could be brought to the body of his son. So on this Good Friday, the creator, the God declared his love by sending his only begotten son into the world in that way. See, on this Good Friday, the great shepherd of the world has sent his son to the body of his son so that his love can be revealed. Not only that, the world has seen the world. See, the world has seen the world. So Jesus, he carried our sin on the cross, secondly, he died for our sins on the cross and thirdly, he has taken the punishment of sin in his body. See, the first thing, he has brought our sins on the cross and brought his sins on the cross. Not only that, the punishment of his body has brought his sins on the cross. So Jesus, he carried our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. He has brought our sins on the cross and brought our sins on the cross. In the Book of Isaiah, Chapter 53, there we find about the affliction of Lord Jesus Christ. See, in Isaiah, in verse 3, we can see the suffering of the world. See, in Isaiah, in verse 3, we can see the suffering of the world. Before his crucifixion, thousands of years ago, the prophet Isaiah prophesied about his crucifixion, about his sufferings. And see, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross thousands of years ago. This great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. See, the great shepherd of the world has brought our sins on the cross. What was prophesied in the Book of Isaiah, Chapter 3, all that was fulfilled in the body of Lord Jesus Christ. And see, whatever is written here has been fulfilled in the world. See, the world has seen it. He was despised for your sake and my sake, he was respected and he was wounded. See, he is forgiven and he has redeemed himself and he has become a person of suffering. See, he has been forgiven and he has redeemed himself and he has redeemed himself. And unjust judgment was given to him. And see, the world has seen it. See, the world has seen it. And spit on his face. And he was flogged. And he was flogged. This is how the Lord Jesus Christ, he has taken all the punishment of sin upon his body. This is how the Lord Jesus Christ, he has taken all the punishment of sin upon his body. So by carrying our sins on the cross and dying for our sins on the cross and secondly, by taking punishment of sin on the cross, he is declaring one thing. And see, he has brought our sins on the cross and brought his sins on the cross. And he has brought his punishment of sin on the cross and brought his sins on the cross. See, the world has seen it. See, the world has seen it. So because of his great and true love, he has become our atonement, our prophesiation. See, for his great and true love, he has become our atonement. See, for his great and true love, he has become our atonement. That is, that is why this morning we are going to commemorate his crucifixion, how Jesus carried our sin on the cross, how he died, how he has taken our punishment, how he has become our atonement. So today, the world has seen the world and the world has seen the world. The great shepherd of the world has come to us and is talking about this. See, the world has seen it. As I already told you in the Old Testament, if somebody wants to be forgiven, he used to bring some animal like a lamb and he put his hands upon the lamb and he takes all the punishment. I have told you before that according to the world, if someone does wrong, they have to bring them to the world. After that, they have to bring their sins to the world and give them forgiveness. See, the world has seen it. My dear brothers and sisters, Jesus did not die on the cross because he committed sin. See, my dear brother and my dear sister, the great shepherd of the world has died on the cross and is not going to do anything wrong. See, the world has seen it. So Jesus did not die because of his sin, but he died on the cross on behalf of your sin and my sins. See, the great shepherd of the world has done something wrong and is not going to die on the cross for his sins. But for his sins, he died on the cross. See, the world has seen it. When he was taken for trial in front of religious leaders and the pilot, he, the pilot declared that he was innocent, he was without any guilt. When the great shepherd of the world was taken to the world and there were people and pilgrims, the pilgrims said that he is a saint. See, the world has seen it. See, the world has seen it. See, the world has seen it. As a innocent son of God, as a blameless son of God, he died on the cross in order to make atonement for your sins and my sins. See, the great shepherd of the world who has no fault has sent his son to the world for his sins on the cross. See, the world has seen it. So this is the first part. And see, this is the first part. And the second part is, I am going to share with you the benefits of the cross. And see, in the second part, the benefit of the cross is what I will tell you. See, in the second part, the benefit of the cross is what I will tell you. So when Jesus died on the cross, from the cross he spoke seven words. And see, when the great shepherd of the world died on the cross, he said seven words. See, the world has seen it. I spoke the first word, "Father, please forgive them; they do, they do not know what they are doing." Firstly, he said, "Father, forgive them because they do not know what they are doing." See, the world has seen it. So because of love, Jesus as a good shepherd laid down his life on the cross and cried, "Father, please forgive them; they do not know what they are doing." The great shepherd of the world loves him and he said to his father, "Father, forgive them because they do not know what they are doing." See, the world has seen it. Look Gospel, Chapter 23. See, John's Gospel, Chapter 23. Gospel according to Saint Luke, Chapter 23, and verse 4, please. See, John's Gospel, Chapter 23. And it is 34. Luke 31:1. So Jesus, the first word he spoke from the cross is about forgiveness. See, firstly, what Jesus said was forgiveness. See, forgiveness is not so easy. See, forgiveness is not so easy. According to the law, the Bible tells, "Without shedding of the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins." See, according to the law, the Bible tells, "Without shedding of the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins." See, according to the law, the Bible tells, "Without shedding of the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins." Without shedding of the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins. And see, without the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins. See, without the blood, there is no forgiveness of sins. My dear brothers and sisters, in order to forgive the sins of mankind, Jesus offered himself on the cross and made atonement for our sins and cried, "Father, forgive them." My dear brother and my dear sister, for this reason, the world cannot do it. For this reason, the great shepherd of the world has brought his sins on the cross and said, "Father, forgive them." See, the world has seen it. So forgiveness of sins is not easy. Forgiveness is not easy. See, forgiveness is not easy. So in order to receive forgiveness of sins, there must be a sacrifice. See, if forgiveness is possible or possible, there is a sacrifice. See, if forgiveness is possible or possible, there is a sacrifice. That is why Jesus died on the cross. That is why Jesus died on the cross, shed his precious blood and given us the forgiveness of sins.
इस कारण प्रभु यशु मसी मारा गया, उसने अपने लहू को बहाया, उसके बाद हमारे पापों की क्षमा हमको मिली।
मेरे युद्ध नगर प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, आया का, मेरे, आया का सिरुलो, मेरे कोट्टा बढ़ाड़ू, मरनीच, मरनीच ड़ू, मने का पापा लक्षमापन लबिस्तो उछन दी।
So behind the forgiveness, forgiveness of sins, there is a great price.
देखिए पापों की क्षमा के पीछे एक बहुत बड़ा मूल्य है।
आया का मेरे पाप में लक्षमिंस टुड़ मु विनुका, एंत गोप्पा क्रायदम क्रायम टुड़ नदी।
So by paying a great price on the cross, Jesus Christ given us the forgiveness of sins.
देखिए एक बड़ा दाम चुका कर, उसने पापों की क्षमा हमको दिया है।
मेरे गोप्पा क्रायनिक शमिंची, मने का पापा लोनु शमिंचन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
He who receives the forgiveness of sins, he becomes a blessed one.
देखिए जो पापों की क्षमा पाता है, वो धन्य पुरुष कहलाता है।
चोरे दे पापक्षमापन पुंडता रहो, वर धन्य लगा पिलो बढ़ता रो।
So this morning, God gave us forgiveness of sins and made us blessed people. Therefore, remembering the crucifixion and his death, let us praise him, praise him and worship him.
आज के सुबह हम परमेश्वर की आराधना करेंगे, क्योंकि उसने हमारे पापों की क्षमा की है और उतना ही नहीं, इस जो क्रूस के जो दृश्य को, इस जो संग, जो बातों को हमारे बीच में लेके आए, उस कारण हम उसका धन्यवाद करेंगे।
इधिकंटे मेरी योद्धकाल सम्प्रभु नु मनमो, आराधन सुनयूंटना मु, मने का पापा लो, आयन शमिंची, मन, मन अपराधाला आने में द, मोस्कुन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
So the first and the foremost benefit of the crucifixion is death is forgiveness of sins.
देखिए सबसे पहला, जो लाभ है, उस क्रूस के द्वारा हम क्या पाते हैं की पापों की क्षमा और उसके कारण हम बने हैं जो धन्य पुरुष।
चुंड मोटम मदर्टी गा मनु पुंडकुन टुड़ते लाभ में नंटे, आया का सिरु द्वारा, मनमो, आया का मेरे, रक्षण मनु पुंडकुन नामो, आया का पापक्षमा मनु पुंडकुन वारगुन्नामो।
So by receiving forgiveness of sins, we have become blessed people, a people inherit the kingdom of God.
और देखिए पापों की क्षमा पाने के पश्चात, हम धन्य लोग कहा, बन गए हैं और धन्य लोगों की संगति में हम आ चुके हैं।
चुंड मेरे पापा लो मनु क्षमापन पुंडकुन तरवता, मनु धन्य लगा मनु पिलो बढ़तो उछामो, धन्य ल मज्जलो मनु कुचन टुड़ वारम का मनल छे बढ़तो उछामो।
And secondly.
दूसरी बात, रेंडो संगति।
The second benefit of the cross is victory over devil.
और देखिए दूसरा जो लाभ है क्रूस के द्वारा, वो क्या है, जो शत्रु के ऊपर जय पाना।
मेरे रेंडो व लाभ नहीं, मनु चतुर्मे दा मनु विज्ञान पुंडकुन वारगुन्नामो।
In the book of Hebrews chapter two and verse fourteen and fifteen, there we find how Jesus destroyed the one who has the power of the death.
देखिए ब्राह्मणों की पत्री, उसका दूसरा अध्याय चौदह और पंद्रह वचन के अनुसार।
एवरी पत्र का रेंडो व जयमु पद्नालो को पदयोन उछन द्वारा।
Read it, read loudly. Yeah, so Jesus has taken part in the flesh and blood in order to destroy the devil, the one who has the power in the death of the cross.
देखिए उसने लकड़े मास और लहू का भागी हुआ, ताकि उस शैतान को वो निकमा कर सके।
चुंड इधिकंटे मेरे, योगा मेरे अनगा, आप, मेरे, आप प्रकार में मरनम योगा बलमगलो वाणी नहीं, अनगा अपवाद नहीं मरनम द्वारा नसिंपच चेटकुनो।
So first benefit, forgiveness of sins, the second benefit, victory over devil, Satan.
सबसे पहला लाभ, हमारे जो पापों की क्षमा और दूसरा जो लाभ है, वो ये है की शत्रु पर विजय पाना।
मेरे रेंडो दी मने का, मोटम मदर्टी गा मने का पापा लो मनु क्षमापन पुंडिन वारगुन्नामो, मनमें रेंडो व चतुर्मे दा मनु विज्ञान पुंडकुन वारगुन्नामो।
So he bore our sins on the cross, secondly he died on the cross for our sake, he has taken our punishment and also he became our atonement. By doing all these things, he gave us the forgiveness of sins.
देखिए उसने हमारे पापों का जो बोझ है, उसने अपने ऊपर उठा लिया, वो क्रूस पर मारा गया, उसने हमारे पापों का दंड भी सहा, इस कारण उसने जो पूरा, जो, जो प्राइश्चित भी वो हमारे लिए बना, और इस कारण हमारे पापों की क्षमा उसने हमको दी।
मोटम मदर्टी गा आयन मने का पापा लो, मेरे सिरुलो भरनीचन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू, मना पापा लो मोस्कुन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू, अधिवेतंगा मना पाप, मनको क्षमापन लबिंचन को वाटित का टुड़ नदी।
And third benefit is.
तीसरा जो लाभ है।
मुड़ो लाभ मु।
Romans chapter five, please be active.
रोमियो की पत्री, पांच अध्याय, सब ध्यान दे यहाँ पर। रोम पत्र का आयदा अज्जयम जानमुंच्छतम।
Please be active and turn your bibles.
सब यहाँ पर ध्यान दीजिए, चुस्त रहे और अपने बाइबल को खोलिए।
चुंड योगा बाइबल ने तेरी चीज, मेरे बाइबल में योग को में ध्यान आनुंचंडी।
Romans chapter five and verse nine please.
रोमियो की पत्री, उसका पांच अध्याय, उसका नौ वचन।
रोम पत्र का आयदा अज्जयम तमित वचन मु।
Much more than having now been justified by his blood, we shall be saved from wrath, wrath through him. Yeah, what we find here is, we, we shall, ninth verse, since therefore we have now been justified by his blood, much more shall we be saved from him, from the wrath of God.
देखिए आत्था, जबकि हम अब उसके लहू के कारण धर्मी ठहरे, तो उसके द्वारा परमेश्वर के क्रोध से क्यों ना बचेंगे?
काबट्य आयन रक्तम वरना यप्पे नीत मतलम का तिरछ बढ़े, मरिन्ता निच्यम का आयन द्वारा उग्रतनुंडे रक्षिम चा बढ़दमो।
So we have been justified by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ and saved from the wrath of God.
और देखिए हम परमेश्वर के लहू के जो द्वारा हमरा, हम लोग धर्मी ठहरे गए, तो हम परमेश्वर के क्रोध से क्यों ना बचेंगे?
चुंड मेरा आया का, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, रक्तन द्वारा मनु नीत मतलम का तिरछ बढ़तो उछामो, आयने का क्रोध मनु कोड़ा मनु तप्पिंच बढ़तो उछामो।
Because of sin, mankind is under the wrath of God.
देखिए पाप के कारण, मनुष्य परमेश्वर के क्रोध में रहता है।
चुंड पाप मु द्वारा मनु देवनियो का वगदर, वग्रत लोन की तय बढ़तो उछाड़ू।
But through the forgiveness of sins, the Lord Jesus Christ saved us.
लेकिन पापों की क्षमा के वजह से, कारण वो जो परमेश्वर ने हमें बचाया है।
चुंड पाप में लक्षमिंस बढ़तो द्वारा, देवड़ मनु रक्षिंस तो उछाड़ू।
So on the, by dying on the cross, Jesus, for he, he granted us forgiveness of sin, secondly victory over devil and thirdly, yes given the great salvation.
और देखिए परमेश्वर उस क्रूस पर मृत्यु पाने के पश्चात, जो लाभ है, उसमें परमेश्वर ने हमारे पापों की क्षमा की है और शत्रु पर विजय पाया है और उतना ही नहीं, उसने हमें महान उद्धार को दिया है।
मोटम मदर्टी गा हमारे, आयन मने का पापा लो, मना आया का सिरुलो, मेरे भरनीच, भरनीच ड़ू द्वारा, मनको, मेरे, मनको पापक्षमापन लबिंचन दी, रेंडो मनको विज्ञान लबिस्तो उछन दी, मुड़ो दिगा, मनु गोप्पा, रक्षण लबिस्तो उछन दी।
And the fourth benefit is.
और चौथा जो लाभ है।
नालगो लाभ मु।
Reconciliation with God.
और परमेश्वर के साथ फिर एक बार मेल, मेल होना।
मेरे मुड़ो दी, नालगो संगति, मनु, मेरे उसार देवन तो कोड़ा, मनु सम्बन्ध, समाधानम कलिगुण ड़ा।
So reconciliation with God.
और देखिए परमेश्वर के साथ मेल मिलाप होना।
देवन तो समाधानम कलिगुण ड़ा।
Because of sin, we are all enemy to God.
और देखिए पापों के कारण, हम सब परमेश्वर के साथ वो शत्रुत्मा में है।
चुंड पाप मु छे, पाप मु लो द्वारा, देवन की मनु चतुर्लगा छे बढ़तो उछामो।
Because of their sin, we have separated from God.
पापों के कारण, हम परमेश्वर से अलग हो चुके हैं।
मेरे पाप मु लच्छे था, देवन च्छे था, मनु प्रचय किंच बढ़तो उछामो।
But Jesus' death brought us reconciliation and peace with God.
लेकिन यशु के मृत्यु के बाद, परमेश्वर के साथ, पिता के साथ हमारा मेल मिलाप हुआ है और हम फिर एक बार उसके साथ जुड़ चुके हैं।
मेरे आया का प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, मरनीचुड़े द्वारा, मनु देवन तो समाधानम पढ़तो, समाधानम कलिगुण वारगुन्नामो।
And the fifth benefit is.
और पांचवा लाभ जो है।
आयदा व लाभ मु।
Romans chapter five and verse nineteen please.
रोमियो की पत्री, उसका पांच अध्याय, उसका उन्नीस वचन।
रोम पत्र का आयदा अज्जयम पंतम मदा वचन मु।
For as by one man's disobedience, many were made sinners, so by the obedience of one shall many be made righteous. See, what we find here is, one man disobedience made us many sinners.
और देखिए एक मनुष्य की जो अवग्न्य का, अवग्न्य का तरीका के कारण, बहुत से लोग को, बहुत से लोग पापी ठहरे।
चुंड वो का मनु छुड़ू, अविद्यत वरना अनेक लो पाप लगा छे बढ़तो उछाड़ू।
But by the one man's obedience, many were made righteous.
वैसे ही एक मनुष्य के आग्न्य मानने से, बहुत लोग धर्मी ठहरेंगे।
So Jesus.
वो का मनु छुड़ू, मेरे विद्यत पंद्रह द्वारा, अनेक मने नीत मतलम का तिरछ बढ़ता रो।
So through the crucifixion, Jesus brought us justification, righteousness.
और देखिए क्रूस के वजह से, क्रूस के कारण, परमेश्वर ने जो न्याय, जो नीति है, उसको हमारे जीवन में उसने लेके आया है।
चुंड आया का सिरु कार्य द्वारा, देवड़ मने का जीत लो, आया का नीति, न्याय में टुड़ते कार्यालय जर्गिस्तो उछाड़ू।
So so far I shared the message in two parts.
देखिए अब तक मैंने दो भागों में इस संदेश को दिया है।
मेरे इधिकंटे कोड़ा, रेंडो मेरे भाग लो, मेरे योग का वात्मान ने तेलीजे सो उछानो।
The first part, the crucifixion, how Jesus died on the cross.
पहला जो भाग में हमने देखा है की परमेश्वर किस तरह वो क्रूस पर मारा गया।
मेरे भाग लो मनु चुस्ता मु, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, ये विदंग आया का सिरुलो मरनीचन तो उछाड़ू।
The second part, the benefits, the benefits of the crucifixion.
और दूसरे भाग में हम देखते आ रहे हैं की क्रूस के कारण क्या लाभ हम पा सकते हैं।
रेंडो संगति मनु चुस्तो उछामो, सिरु द्वारा मनु पुंडकुन टुड़ते मेल नु।
In the first part, we have seen how Jesus bought our sins on the cross.
और पहले भाग में हमने देखा है की परमेश्वर ने किस तरह हमारे पापों का, उसने जो बोझ है, उसने अपने ऊपर उठा लिया है।
मेरे मद्रभाग लो मनु चुस्ता मु, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, मने का पाप भारण ये विदंगा बलिस्तो उछाड़ू।
And secondly, how he died on the cross for our sins.
और दूसरी, दूसरा, उसमें देखा है हमने की किस तरह वो अपना, क्रूस पर अपने आप को उसने अर्पण किया है।
रेंडो संगति मनु चुस्तो उछाम, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, ये विदंगा, आया का सिरुलो, मेरा आया का मरण ने पुंडिन टुड़ वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
And thirdly, we have seen how Jesus has taken the punishment of sin upon his body.
और तीसरी बात हमने देखा है किस तरह परमेश्वर ने पापों का जो दंड है, अपने ऊपर उसने लिया है।
मुड़ो संगति, मेरे प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, ये विदंगा, मने का पाप शिक्षण आयन में द मोपकुन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
The Bible tells us, the Lord Jesus Christ, he became a sin on the cross and cursed on the cross.
सवित्र बाइबल ये कहती है की परमेश्वर, उस क्रूस पर वो पाप बना, और वो शाप को उसने लिया है।
मेरे देवड़ विदंग टुड़ नाड़ू, आया का सिरु में द, आया का, आया का पाप मने दी, पाप निशापम गा मार्स्तो उछाड़ू।
The punishment of sin, he is, is so heavy that nobody cannot bear it.
ये देख, देखिए ये पाप का जो दंड है, ये इतना भारी होता है, ये कोई सह नहीं सकता।
चुंड आया का पाप शिक्षा, एंत भारण गुण दी, अवर कोड़ा सहिंचले टुड़ वाड़को नदी।
But Jesus Christ, because of sin, he has taken all the punishment for which we, we deserve.
और देखिए पाप, पापों के कारण जो दंड, प्रभु यशु मसी ने अपने ऊपर लिया है, हालांकि वो सब हमें लाभ, हम पर, वो जो, हम उसके भागीदार है।
चुंड इधिकंटे देवड़, आया का प्रभु, मने का पापा लेनी, मने का पापा शिक्षण अंतर्ण कोड़ा, आयन में द मोपकुन टुड़ वाड़गुन्नाड़ू, तद्वारा, आया का मनु, आया का पाप शिक्षा द्वारा मनु मेलु पुंडकुन वाणी।
And because of his love, he became our profession, which means an atonement.
और देखिए उसके प्रेम के कारण, वो हमारा प्राइश्चित वो बना है।
चुंड आयन का प्रेम द्वारा, मनु, मनु निमित्त में आयन प्राइश्चितम छे बढ़ाड़ू।
The second part, we have seen the benefits of the crucifixion.
दूसरे भाग में हम देखते हैं की क्रूस के द्वारा पाए हुए लाभ।
रेंडो भाग लो मनु चुस्ता मु, आया का सिरु द्वारा, मनु पुंडकुन टुड़ते लाहवाल नु।
Jesus spoke seven words from the cross, the first one is about forgiveness.
यशु मसी ने उस क्रूस पर सात बातों को कहा, जिसमें पहला है इनक्षमा कर।
मेरे प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, आया का सिरुलो, ये वो माटलो पलिकन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू, मोटम मदर्टी माटा, मेरे क्षमापन गुरु चेपलिकन टुड़ वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
Forgiveness of sins is not so easy.
देखिए पापों का क्षमा करना, ये आसान, साधारण बात नहीं है।
मेरे पाप में लक्षमिंस टुड़ मु एंत सलोबम का दो।
To give us forgiveness of sins, Jesus had to die on the cross, shed his precious blood.
देखिए हमें पापों की क्षमा देने के लिए, प्रभु यशु मसी को क्रूस पर मृत्यु पाना पड़ा।
मेरे आया का पापा लक्षमिंस टुड़ कोरके, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, आया का सिरुलो मरना ने पुंडकुन सो उछन दी।
The second benefit, he gave us victory over devil by destroying him in the, on the death of the cross.
और दूसरी जो लाभ है, हमने देखा है की शत्रु पर उसने हमें जय दिया है, उस क्रूस पर वो, उसने अपना प्राण को देकर, शत्रु को उसने उसने हराया।
मेरे रेंडो लाभ ने मनु चुस्न टुड़ते, आया का सिरुलो, आया मरनीच, आया का चतुर्मे दी, विज्ञान ने मनु पुंडकुटा निकी, आयन मरनीचन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
And third benefit of the crucifixion is salvation, great salvation.
और तीसरा लाभ जो हमने देखा है, वो है उद्धार, महान उद्धार।
मेरे मुड़ो लाभ ने चुस्ता मु, गोप्पा, मेरे रक्षण नु मनु चुस्त टुड़ नामो।
And the fourth benefit is reconciliation with God.
और चौथी जो लाभ हमने देखी है, वो परमेश्वर के साथ मेल मिलाप।
मेरे नालगो लाभ ने मनु चुस्न नामो, देवन तो समाधानम कलिगुण ड़ा।
Because of sin, we are enemy to God.
पापों के कारण, हम परमेश्वर के साथ शत्रुत्मे द।
चुंड पाप मु वरना, देवन की मनु चतुर्लगा छे बढ़तो उछामो।
We are separated from God.
हम परमेश्वर से अलग किए गए द।
मेरे देवन नुंडी मनु विरोध लगा, मेरे वेर परछ बढ़तो उछन नामो।
But we praise God because of the crucifixion, because of the death of the Lord Jesus Christ, now we have been reconciled to God.
लेकिन परमेश्वर को हम धन्यवाद देते हैं की उसके मृत्यु के द्वारा, उस क्रूस पर जो उसने बली को छड़ाया है, उस कारण परमेश्वर पिता के साथ हमारा फिर मेल मिलाप होकर, हम उसके साथ जुड़ चुके हैं।
धन्य, प्रभु के मनु अंदलस्म, मेरे इधिकंटे, आया का सिरुलो, मेरा, आया का मरनम द्वारा, तिरीकी मनु देवन तो समाधान परस्तो उछन ड़ू।
Now we have no more envy between, with God.
अब देखिए परमेश्वर के साथ हमारी कोई बैरता नहीं है।
इधिकंटे देवन तो, मेरे एंतमात्र गोड़ा, मेरे विरोधम मु मनु लेन वारम गुण टुड़ नामो।
Now we have peace with God because of the crucifixion.
अब पिता के, पिता के साथ, हमारा जो शांति है, उस क्रूस के वजह से।
मेरे देवन तो ये देते, मनु शाम, समाधानम कलिगुण टुड़ नामो, आया का सिरु द्वारा समाधानम कलिगुण वारम का उन्नामो।
And the fifth benefit is.
पांचवा जो लाभ है।
आयदा व लाभ मु।
Justification by his blood.
और जो धर्मी ठहराना, धर्मी होना, उसके लहू के द्वारा।
मेरे प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, रक्तम द्वारा, मनु नीत मतलम का तिरछ बढ़तो उछामो।
He obeyed to the cross and made us righteous.
देखिए उसने उस क्रूस की आग्न्य को माना, और उसके बाद उसने हमें धर्मी ठहराया।
आया का मेरे, आ, सिरु कार्य ने, आया का आग्निक लोब टुड़ वाड़गुन्नाड़ू, मनल नीत मतलम का छे चड़ू।
Whatever we lost in the first man Adam, that was restored in the second Adam through the crucifixion.
जो भी हमने पहले खोया था, उस पहले आदम के द्वारा, हमने फिर दोबारा, जो दूसरे आदम है, उस क्रूस के वजह से हमने फिर वापस को पाया।
मोदर्टी आदम टु, आदम द्वारा, ये देते, मनु कोल पोस्तो उछामो, रेंडो व आदम टुड़ते, प्रवेश यशु कृष्ण वारु, आया का सिरुलो चेसन टुड़ते, आया का त्यागं द्वारा, तिरीकी मनु पुंडकुटो उछामो।
So the main point of the Good Friday is nothing but the great true love of God.
देखिए मुख्य बात, शुभ शुक्रवार का ये है, वो सिर्फ परमेश्वर का जो प्रेम को दिखाता है।
मेरे योगा गुरुल पर योगा मुख्य समुद्यश्मियों टुड़ते, ये मयोन टुड़ते, यशु कृष्ण वारु निजम टुड़ते, प्रेम योन टुड़ नदी।
So God manifested his true love, his sacrificial love, everlasting love on the cross of Christ.
और देखिए परमेश्वर ने अपना जो, जो नित्य प्रेम है, जो अनंतकाल का प्रेम है, जो अद्भुत प्रेम है, उस क्रूस पर उसने दिखाया है।
मेरे देवड़ तनयका नित्य में टुड़ते प्रेम, अनंतकाल में टुड़ते प्रेम, आया का कलोर सिरु द्वारा चुपिस्तो उछाड़ू।
So by remembering divine love, then surprise and worship God.
और इस अद्भुत, जो प्रेम प्रभु ने जो दिखाया, हम पर इसको स्मरण करते हुए, आइए हम परमेश्वर की आराधना उच्चत।
देवड़ दे देते, मनपक्षना, तनयका प्रेम, अद्भुत में टुड़ते प्रेम, चुपिस्तो, चुपिस्तो उछाड़ू, प्रेम नग्नापुंज उछन टु, आयन मनु आराधन चेट वारम गुण टामो।
We deserve such a death.
और देखिए सचमुच हमें ऐसी मृत्यु का हम भागीदार है।
इधिकंटे निजंगा, निजम का मनु चप्पल टुड़ते, एलांटी मरना निकी, मनु पात्रम योन नामो।
But because of great love of God, he has taken our place and he redeemed us.
लेकिन ये परमेश्वर का अद्भुत प्रेम है, जिस कारण हमारे वजह से वो मारा गया और इस प्रेम को उसने दर्शाया।
चुंड इधिकंटे देवड़ तनयका अद्भुत में टुड़ते प्रेम द्वारा, आयन मरनीच ड़ू, मनल आयद दगरी के नड़पिंचन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
So the Good Friday goodness is, God has taken all our badness and he gave us all his goodness.
और ये शुभ शुक्रवार का जो संदेश, आपके बीच में हम ये लेके आते हैं की परमेश्वर ने जो, बुरे जो चीजें द, या बुरी, बुरी जो जिंदगी थी, उसको निकलकर एक अच्छेपन को हमारे बीच, हमारे जीवन में लेके आया।
योगा गुड प्राइड टुड़ टुड़ते, अर्धम योन टुड़ते, मने का छट्टा, तलम्प ने का छट्टा, परिप्रवर्तन, अंतर्ण कोड़ा तीसवे सी, आया का मंच प्रवर्तन द्वारा, यशु कृष्ण सिरु कार्य द्वारा, आया का, आयन सिरु दगरी के मनु को चेचन टुड़ वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
That is why the good shepherd of the sheep, he laid down his life for our sake and gave us this good pride.
इसलिए उस अच्छे चरवा ने, अपने, अपने आप को उस क्रूस पर अर्पण किया है, अपने प्राण को दिया है, और उस क्रूस के द्वारा हम ये देखते हैं।
मेरे मंच काबरण टुड़ते, यशु कृष्ण प्रभावरु, आया का सिरुलो तनु तनु आपकी इंच कोनी, मनल ने तनदगरी के नड़पिंचन वाड़गुन्नाड़ू।
So they just remembering all these things and praise God with all our hearts.
ये सब चीजों को स्मरण करते हुए, आइए हम परमेश्वर की आराधना उच्चत।
ये संगत लंडी कोड़ा मनु नापकुंज उछन टु, आयन मनु आराधन चेट वारम गुण टामो।
May God help us all.
और परमेश्वर हमें सायता करे।
देवड़ आयन का मनको सायम चेन।